Horizon Bio Channel 24. And by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, February 10, 2015. The Board will take formal action on attainment of bills and other agenda items.
The Obergeiss Township Board of Education, the knowledge also that pro auto is a trust that members in the public, having members of the board, have a right to report on the board meetings using audio or video recording devices. Providing that that active recording does not interfere with business activity on this public board. Therefore, the board makes it no matter if it's a recording, this should be considered private recording, which in any court, no matter represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility, this is private recording, completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Okay.
Andrea Yang.
Here.
Rossili.
Here.
Kramer.
Ellis Boston.
Here.
Ottman.
Here.
Monk.
Here.
Singh. Weber.
Here.
The local township.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so.
United States America, and the Republican Party stand in one nation.
Okay, number six. Moment of silence, we'll do that next week. Code of Ethics, can I get somebody to run a character to read that? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, approval of the minutes. Any questions? Okay, number eight. Report to student representative for four, that'll be done next week. Recognition, do we have recognition? Yes, too. Will there be a superintendent's report?
There'll be a superintendent's report on the annual survey, self-assessment that these schools have to do, and provide all the information that we're.
Progress in goal, goal, or anybody have a report on that?
We might have a progress first goal report on the, either one of the district goals, or we have some new information on the school's.
Special committee reports, I'm sorry, correspondence. Special committee reports, anybody gonna have a committee report next Tuesday?
Well, it's gonna, oh, the policy's already out, so we'll just cover that there.
We'll cover it, okay. And finance, I don't know if you can talk about that yet. The committee report, meeting we had last week. No, we can't, not yet. Okay, facilities use, any questions on this one?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, in looking over, there's some of the, I know that it came up the other night, but um, where it says that something is requested, how long do we wait before we get a copy of the chart? And on one that it says concussion pending, does that mean they have everything else but the concussion? Or that's all they have and they're waiting? And if that's the case, how do we let basketball lacrosse or whomever practice without that? So what do we, what do we do?
Yeah, as of this afternoon, there were only two Girl Scout troops that had not supplied us with their insurance. This report may be just a little bit out of date slightly. In terms of concussion policy, I have to get back to you with an answer on that, because I'm not quite sure how we enforce that.
Well, and I know that Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts have insurance, so they may just not have gotten to, but they have to have that for their charter, so that I know. But there's one that says Old Bridge Boys Lacrosse. So, I mean, that's, I'm assuming that's not the high school team or the school team, if that's the rec team. If that's the case, how do we have somebody running around sticks without insurance?
Good point. I have to get back to you, I mean, if, Donna, it would be helpful if you would ask me these questions prior to the meeting, because I don't have all these facts.
I'm not, Joe, I'm not asking for an answer. I'm just, do we have any questions? I'm, I'm just, I'm asking questions.
Any other questions? So, Mr. Mayor, you'll have the answers for Ms. Adrian and the rest of the board, thank you.
Well, here's another one that says the Rebels as well. That's over though, but that was requested and we never got it. So, if it's athletics versus Girl Scouts, I mean, it should be an equitable policy, but you can't have people doing playing sports if we don't have a thing of insurance on file.
I agree. In other words, these people can't use our building then, until the insurance document is given to Mr. Mayor.
Because you can't say assume, because one's a national organization, one's a local organization, but the national organization gets paid.
Well, even, even knowing that somebody has insurance, it is very different than having their insurance certificate in hand. Uniformity of enforcement is very important.
So, let me ask you this question, I don't know if we've covered this yet, but like, Old Bridge Recreation Lacrosse, if they, if they're using our facility based upon their recreation connection, don't they have to provide them with insurance?
Yes. And who would need to, you would need as a district to receive whatever municipal entity is being covered, to give them their food insurance.
We're assuming they showed it to them, but we don't know that. There's rec scheduled through the school district, for a particular facility. Arbitrary rec like anybody else, if they're, if they're gonna schedule eighteen, whoever that team is, and they already require the insurance, then it should be in our brain, they just gotta pass it on to us.
Oh, my impression is does the township recreation, township recreation, township recreation.
They still have to provide, whether they're part of, whether they're the lacrosse, whether they're the little league team, or they still have to give us.
Yeah, and unless, unless the rec, I would assume, Chris, if the rec has proof, both entities is named insurance on it, which it's a five, they could just collect it and pass it on.
Yes, that getting from the municipality would be easy enough, and it would be sufficient.
My question is why do we have a shared service agreement for duplicating services then? We have two people asking the same group for insurance.
So, could we?
Their, their insurance will list us as an additional insurance insurer. It's just one insurance that they have, there's not duplication. So, the insurance that they have with the town will provide them the option to list us as additional insurance. So, it's not a duplication, it's not them buying two different insurance. I'm saying, yeah, I'm saying, but the insurance, the recreation is supposed to make sure they have insurance. And then, like, that's not good enough, and then when they come here, we have to make sure they have insurance.
No, if, if it's coming through the township, there's no way to indicate that it's coming through the township.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the question, right? Because there are obviously rec programs that come in through the township, and I asked this question once before, and I was told that when they're coming through the rec department, the rec department confirms that all insurance, concussion and everything is on file. However, I know by looking at this, and I know a lot of organizations in town, that some of them are individual, and are not coming through the recreational department. So, if it's a, let's just say, a little league in town, a teammate has to utilize the facility for their practice, and they submit the form directly into the administration. So, they're not going through the rec department, so how do we know that that team has, there? So, maybe what we need to do on this report is to identify which ones are coming through the rec department, and which ones are not. And then, if they're not coming through the rec department, then we should understand in that, because we should be notified whether or not all insurance and concussion is on file.
What's, what's the difference between, yeah, but it's not, we haven't done yet, but what's the difference between the designation as SS, a shared service, or recreation?
School sponsor, no, that's school sponsored.
And here it says.
That's school sponsored?
That's art, that's art, not your program.
Okay, and what's NP?
Nonprofit.
So, when it says rec, are you telling me that they are requesting it to the rec department in the township, and the rec department is asking us to do that?
No, no, where else can the rec department, their part of the rec department, program, where else can the rec department get insurance?
It looks like, if just looking at it quickly, that where it indicates rec, if you scroll over to the, to the right side, that, that it's typically on file.
So, what's NP?
Nonprofit.
So, what about them, then, after you're at the department?
Nope.
Okay, so then, so for instance, there's one team on here that says concussion only, does that mean we don't have insurance? Uh, files?
Which one?
How about Old Bridge Liketh, which is nonprofit?
That's the only one that we are waiting.
Right, didn't we come to a conclusion that they will not be allowed to use the facilities until documents are presented?
Well, who's gonna tell them?
No, we, this was just discussed in the last policy, but the implementation of this is gonna take a little bit of time, we're just starting. Now, if you want me to enforce this and prevent people from using our buildings, I said this to policy, we have to put in place a mechanism to prevent people from using our buildings.
So, Joe, so Joe, on the second page towards the very bottom, there's OB Baseball, OB Boys Lacrosse on there twice. OB Baseball says concussion only, they started using the facilities on January 15th. And Old Bridge Boys Lacrosse has been utilizing the facility since November, and it says requests, but that doesn't, request to me sounds like we don't have.
Old Bridge tries to, that's a school sponsored event, they're covered by our insurance.
Oh, okay, what about the Old Bridge Baseball that says NP?
That means we do not have their certificate, we have their concussion policy on file.
So, they're using the facilities with no insurance on file?
Right, well, we did come to the conclusion that that's not gonna happen.
But it is happening.
This was just last week, I don't know how long, Joe, just, you can't just put it, can't just change it, you know, on Tuesday for Wednesday. I agree, I mean, there's a liability, but.
You're making that out of the quote, we get to, to get back to you.
So, how long does it take?
A little work in progress, we have, and what I'm saying is, most of, most of the ones that we did not have the certificates for, we have, companies now identifying so that you can see, especially if you ask what type of organization it is. So, if you just look at class of 2016, and there's no concussion policy, no insurance certificate, I can at least answer you now, that's a school sponsored event, so we're evolving to where we need to get, but I still don't have means to prevent an organization that's been, that's been doing something here since October, to stop them, if we don't have their insurance certificate. And I will do that, if that's what the Board for Examinative. And I said this repeatedly as to policy meetings, if you want me to prevent a move, we will advise these groups tomorrow that they can't use the facilities. That's where you want me to go, that's what I'll do, that's what I think we need to do?
Doesn't really warrant for that? We were sure, I guess.
Yes.
Something happened, besides, walk in.
I mean, I'm sure when they, when they submitted the forms, I've submitted forms for organizations that have participated with, and I'm told constantly that.
Yeah, we do have to give them some notice though, because I can see the point that a club is assuming they're okay, and they've been able to use it, can I, right, and then I'll let you go. So, if, if a club's been doing it, and we've given them the okay, if we come and say, oh, never mind, now stop, we can do it, but is there like a, do you need to give them a week's notice, or something like that?
Let me finish my statement that I was making. So, I've submitted forms for organizations that I've participated in camp, and every time I've participated, and I've sent the forms, whether it be for scouts, or for sports, whether it be for little league baseball, soccer, and so on, I was told when filing the forms, that I would not be able to utilize the facilities if certain papers of documentation was not put in. So, I'm sure, not a hundred percent positive, because I'm sure there's times that they forget to notify the person when they're submitting it, but I'm sure that they were told when they submitted, right? And in addition, on the back of the form, because we've gone through this in the policy meeting, it states that you will not be allowed to utilize those facilities unless all documentation is on file. So, if they read the form, they know that they were supposed to have that information on file. So, you know, I think what needs to be done is sometimes we need some way to go through this, and inform everybody that they don't have all the documentation on file, the documentation will be a bit sort of, they will not be allowed to do that.
Do you give them a day, do you give them a couple days, that's what I'm saying, what's the timeframe you give them?
I mean, we're unsure during an example, and it can happen next time. You know, it's a condition of their renting and purchase, or using the first place to provide insurance. They're in the fault, we're not in the fault, that would be a problem.
Kelly, because it's enforcement, it exists in requirement if you use facilities forms, there is no need to provide a grace period. Purely from my corner, literally, it's, it's best to not provide the grace period, because if they're not compliant, you don't have any protection of the concussion documentation or of insurance coverage, you're in pre-call status, that's not a good place to be.
I would also suggest that, at the school level, they don't accept an application from recreation or any private organization without the certificate of insurance. You consider it incomplete, and just inject it.
As the updated application forms spell all that out, and then painfully.
That's it, then, we don't accept them, we don't schedule until that is.
I have no problem, and I agree with the ones that we control, but as you're saying, they don't have it, let them know tomorrow, no grace period, fine with that. But the township schedules those similar parts of facilities on their own, without, they notify us through a report like this after the fact, but they don't send it out for approval, as per the shared services agreement, at certain facilities, so.
Are these posted?
Let me give, let me give you one example. Camp Robin has Shepherd School, seven to eight, from October 8th to May 23rd, 2015, and they have not provided our, for the, the insurance. So, tomorrow will advise them that they're not able to use insurance, or next Wednesday have insurance.
I'm sure they have it, and I'm sure they fax it right over.
So, we've already requested it, and we have not received it.
So, why did they not?
Unfortunately, I guess the type of thing where it's seen as serious, out of enforcement, hate to not give any praise, especially for a group like that, but can't make a total move.
So, someone educated, is Camp Robin a township?
Township or how it's structured, I mean, it's not by the township, but I'm sure it's a private association with the township.
I thought it was completely run by private donation.
Yeah, so we'd have to check.
Because it's township, and it's covered by township insurance, and I just was, I'm preparing for the direction I've seen go sometimes, because we have a very good working environment right now with township recreation, but when the boys individual lacrosse team steps on Guide Park, are they gonna say, well, I'm sorry, I don't have the boys individual insurance, and I know you're covered by the Department of, the Board of Education, but I need to see an insurance for every time a team steps on, because you're doing that to every organization that we have.
No, we have it on file. So, somebody in the athletic department gets the township to file, fax it right over, not Robin.
Yeah, but he's saying the opposite now.
No, it doesn't, doesn't work.
If we use, yeah, if I, because I know as a lacrosse parent, that you should use that.
So, they don't have to sign one every time, so it's up to the athletic director, or the athletic department, or someone in administration to fax it right over, because I'm sure we have one. So, what works from A to Z, works from Z to X.
With, with the past, if I'm the very qualifier, turning along with our own qualifier, I suggest that we sit down and work out and agree that both entities be satisfied, everybody.
I think that's a good idea, if we go, you're rec, you're young, if Camp Robin's not coming in, something's gonna come back the other way.
It's gonna carry that.
So, I'm not sure which way to go, so, do anything tomorrow? Can we leave it in Mrs. Han's?
Let's look at the attorney's.
I'll talk to you about it tomorrow, Joe. I'll deal with the, Mr. Rosell and Mr. Garcia tomorrow, but I will also update the administration tomorrow, so there's no, I, I too will go with that a grace period.
Thank you, okay. Any other questions? Okay, number fifteen, bearing of residence on agenda items only. Bearing of residence on agenda items, anything?
When they, when they present stuff, when they talk, they say they hundred percent fund donations, hundreds of years ago.
Policy. Okay, we have one policy, the board committees, that I guess, of course, we'll discuss that later.
You're probably well advised to discuss it now.
Okay, go ahead.
Have the discussion now, so that you know where the board stands before it's on the ballot.
Very good, okay, that's the part, what did we do with the old policy, and how do we create the new plan?
At the direction, based on the consensus of the policy committee, what the new policy definitely, the new bylaw does, is first of all, saves pink, and secondly, it lays out the very simple rule that is followed throughout the state and in every district in Middlesex County, except for you and Monroe currently, with regard to committees. Committees in five hundred and seventy-something of the school districts in New Jersey are four or fewer board members and administrative liaison. They're not members of the public, it's not sunshine, it can be in special circumstances, but normally, the default situation for a committee is that it is a small private work session where ideas are marketplace and then brought to the Board of Education. In that spirit, the committee consensus from two weeks ago, is to present this streamlined bylaw, 01552, which updates, as you see in the number of paragraphs one through eight, the actual existing committees, and simplifies everything. And says at the back, page two, which is a two-sided document, that the committees are private unless a majority of the committee, or the chair of the committee, determine it should be open to the public on a special basis. So, that's what's being examined by the committee to the Board of Education for consideration and adoption for a first and second reading in February and March. This is a town to discuss it, ask the committee for this basis to their decision, ask me for the legal issues, ask the administration for the legislative.
But based on the option of this policy, no committee meetings will be authorized unless the chair of the committee wanted to be, so that's, and it's a, for example, technology is usually, so this policy is about the, the.
The chair of the committee would have to tell, Mr. Mayor, to advertise it, if we wanted to advertise, and open the plan.
But action is not taken necessarily.
Action's never taken.
And if the chairperson, if the chairperson wants to advertise, they can tell them at the beginning of their appointment, and we will. The option, yes, the option to advertise is still there, so if that committee chair, the technology committee, or the athletic service wants to advertise, they can just immediately advertise.
But you just said that, if they don't play in January, they can't pay you.
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying, when the committee, when the committee chairs are appointed, at that point, or at any point at all, you can tell me to advertise all of our.
When your meeting is set up, in other words, you're setting it up for Mark.
And then, in turn, that same committee chairperson could create acceptance, so for instance, if the technology committee is generally going to be open, but then there's going to be a discussion of maybe a bidding process or something like that for technology, where directed administrative information is necessary, and it's not something that really should be digested by the public at that point, then that committee chairperson can say, we're gonna be proud of it, at this point.
I just have a question on here, but it's obviously suspended in 2007, what happened? Whoever? I'm sorry. Is that the story suspended on October of 2007? I don't think that would be suspended.
I didn't know why, I was kidding.
So, I, I, I could be.
I wasn't on it, Dr. But you had.
It is, it's unusual, you do have the right to suspend your bylaws and policies, but that's before I was around, so I, and if your administrators were, you know.
At one point, and I was here in 2007, we tried to consolidate committees together, and have like one meeting a month of not only, you know, you know, that's, I think that's what that was about, or you would discuss any, any item athletics, or, you know.
So, you went to a true committee of a, like a second workshop.
We tried, we tried.
So, then, I guess it didn't work, and then it went and stayed until July.
So, Chris, what is the reason that we went in this direction, as opposed to what the board had discussed pretty recently, where we had discussed with us almost the board, the fact that we still had open committee meetings for the public, and that, to me, it was the will of the board to maintain that. And the understanding was that if there was a topic that we felt needed to be discussed as closed session, we would advertise that a portion of the meeting might be in closed session, so we would meet with the public, and then go into closed session if that needed. Why did we decide to go in this direction, where we have more of a window to just see committee meetings closed to the public, and focusing on what we.
Couple answers to that, first of all, don't forget, the language that you're talking about was proposed in December of 2013, and was rejected at both the committee level, and by, actually, it was discussed at committee level, but it was rejected by the Board of Education. In your reorganization meeting this year, we talked about the shuffling of committees and the reorganization of committees. So, this bylaw was then placed on the January policy committee meeting agenda. At that time, the issue of a closed policy, a closed committee structure was raised, and it was at that time, the consensus of the policy committee to present it to the board like this.
Three members of the committee, or four members?
I would've said three members.
It was four.
Two, four of us here.
I've forgotten who was at that.
But in essence, it's really no change, it's just one more step for Mr., I'm sorry. No, it would just be one more step for Joe, because a meeting is assumed closed unless you decide not to, and you just tell Joe, open it up, and then back to the whiteboard.
Right now, meetings are all, the chair doesn't have to tell the board.
I wanna save the board some money, that's the reason why I went in that direction. Advertising's very expensive, plus we went from eleven, eleven or twelve committees down to eight.
I, I agree with that, I, I think that it should be that the meetings are open unless they're advertised, be in closed session for the reasons that a board has a right to be in closed session, and that's, I'm just one board.
No, I understand.
Well, we could do it in reverse, we could still advertise over. I think the problem that we saw in terms of the execution of those committee meetings, that in some sections, it said that there had to be 25 members of the public included on the committee, correct? And it was just.
Yeah, your, your current bylaw lists specific structures for various different committees, which is highly unusual and illogical, because you have been elected, if you and Mr. Singh have been elected to represent the board, you certainly have administrative expertise at your disposal. So, to have 25 members of the board with a certain number of PTA representatives, et cetera, et cetera, at a, in a standing committee, is a kind of advocacy.
Everything on page one I agree with, I just don't agree with. I agree with that language. Everything on page one I agree with, I just don't agree with the committee meetings shall not be open to the public. I think that we want the input of the public.
That's right, I agree with her. It's always been, it's always been, like I said, curriculum. We're going to have a curriculum meeting.
That should be everything.
So what are we going to have? Four, four members and who's going to discuss what's going on?
Chris, can you give everyone examples, why, if I'm going to executive session?
The basis to go into executive session are the components, are personnel negotiations, land sale, land use, confidential student matters, matters of contract, things like that. So curriculum meeting, just because an issue is sensitive, even if an issue is bombastic and will draw very strong opinions from the public and may prematurely frighten people, you can't choose to go into executive session for that because that's not within the open public meetings act. Once you've sunshine to meeting, you can only go into executive sessions for the enumerated reasons.
And that was the point why I was brought up, and that's why the majority of districts do it that way because you're running an organization here. And while we have a board that we are responsible to report to, ideas and projected possibilities on something, you don't want to put a possibility for everything you're talking about and planning an organization of a hundred and fifty million dollar budget out to everyone when you're just even tossing ideas around. Because if I said in this room that we're looking at, we're looking at a financial shortfall, we may have to close three schools as a possibility of that, the first thing is going to do is people in the board is going to go, well, let's see, they're closing three schools. And then we start talking through the, we start talking through the meeting, okay, well, what would we do, this, do this and do this? And oh, we're not going, okay, so we're not going to close the schools. And then we just created panic for everyone because we haven't had the ability to meet as CEOs of any organization do before they bring it to the stockholders and to the general public.
Well, two answers, couldn't you say that meeting?
No, you can't say, just for that, I don't know, you have to have the ability to, there's only reasons that you can go into privacy. You can't just say, because this is sensitive, I might incite people that I want to close everyone out, then that's not the.
But I believe if a, if a committee chair, so we go down to my, the curriculum chair says, I want all my, beginning of the year, you know, first quarter, I want to make sure my January, February, March meetings are all open to the public. They have that flexibility to do that, right?
Right.
So it's not taking that away, so that is still.
Yeah.
It still allows you, so it's not.
You won't, you won't.
Right, I won't.
And I'm not saying anybody on this board will, but you don't know in the future, board members and so on, what people, they may or may not, right? So I think, and I think it always leaves the, the, the public with that thought in their mind that people are doing things behind their back, when we have that ability to just have meetings without advertising them. And, and my, and we spoke together as a board where we set our goals, and one of the goals that we set as a board was to be more transparent to the public. And I think the, with transparency we have, we were proud of the fact that we are one of the few towns left in the state of New Jersey that has our meetings open to the public, so, you know, I think that we're stepping away from something that we really were proud to hold on to.
And I agree with you because every meeting that I have ever been at, chaired for the last fourteen years, okay, has always been open to the public to get their, their input, especially the curriculum. We have teachers coming from every school giving input on what was going on so that the public was aware of it. Now for us to take that away, what is the sense in having, are we already finished place? What is the sense in having a committee meeting then at all? If all you're going to have is three or four board members there, okay, to discuss, say, curriculum, what do the board members know about curriculum?
Okay, so can I answer now? Because that level of what you're saying is a facade and a lie.
Excuse me?
It's a facade and a lie because there's no level of, if that goes, as long as I'm in the district, what will happen is, it's not open to the public, that someone will call you and have this conversation with you, then have the conversation with you, and have the conversation with you. So you're still having the conversation, but you're not having it with the public, and that's avoiding the transparency. Because if it's a sensitive issue, that is what has always happened in this district. People have gone out to the hallway and had conversations on the side because they didn't want to have it out in front of the public. Or they make phone calls because they, they call each board member individually, which they can. So in the essence of saying, we're doing this to be transparent, we're being actually less transparent because when things come up that you don't want to discuss with the public because it might never happen, but it could be alarming, we don't really act as transparent as we projecting that we are saying we're doing. Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm not saying.
I don't understand what you're saying. And I, I don't understand what the word lying means.
Because it's not, it's not saying you, it's not saying you're lying, I'm saying to say to everyone, we're doing it to be transparent, but we're not really being as transparent as we want to be is, is a facade.
I believe it's an insult, insult to the intelligence of the public and the public of the district to assume that if you discuss openly what may happen, what might happen, if we might have a deficit, if we might have to close a school, if we're talking about this new adoption, that they would only hear it when it comes on an agenda at that time. I think that, in my opinion, and I'm only one board member, that's why I would not support this, I feel that when we had a crisis, a financial crisis, and we had open meetings and we had to discuss how we're going to deal with the fact that we can't pay for what we have now, the public was there and, and it was widely attended and, you know, they have a right to know. And that's the way I feel, and if you think that this policy is going to eliminate board members or anybody going into the hall or talking on the phone, I think that's being naive.
I think the point of the policy is to allow the administration to have conversations with the board, with the committee members, and, and discuss things candidly without creating panic, without, it's not to say that we're not going to share it with the public, but at least we have an opportunity to share it with the committee before it goes out and before the panic sets in and before the rumors. And I, I mean, it is truly amazing how quickly things spread, you know, throughout the township and that it would eliminate that piece of it. It's not meant to keep things from the public in any way and, or to not share the information. But the, the other example is even with the personnel committee. We try not to put something on the agenda without you having, without them having a heads up, so we have that meeting, we discuss it, we say, here's why this is going on. We have those conversations, which we can't have in public.
Obviously, personnel and negotiations are not open meetings, but.
But there is, there are other curriculum related, and again, the curriculum, the curriculum committee is different than the other committees. But every discussion, to have it with a thousand people versus the committee, it prohibits from moving forward.
But can't you have an executive session before?
Thank you, I was just going to say that.
You can't, you can't have executive session as a meeting that is sunshine unless it is for one of these statutorily designated reasons. You can't say, this is really important, let's go into executive session, it doesn't work that way.
So then if the administration needs to discuss whatever prior to, say, curriculum meeting, he's able to contact the people who are on that committee, the members, okay? I'm not saying go into executive session, contact them prior, for whatever reason it is he needs to do that, okay? But it shouldn't stop the public from being here, and as far as rumors are concerned, excuse me, but you're always going to have that. No matter whether it's outside that hallway, around the corner, I don't care where it is, okay? You're never going to stop that, Dave. The best way to stop it is if a rumor does become active and a board member is called, then that board member should be directing that information to central administration for them to give the answer. And that's when the rumors will stop because it's coming directly from the people who are in charge to run the district, okay? But as far as rumors are concerned, they're always going to be there, that's never going to stop.
My example is what you've just said is an example of how I'm saying that transparency that you're just talking, discussing is a farce. Because if I'm calling you, and I'm calling you, and I'm calling all four members of the board of the committee, I've just had a meeting without including the public in it, but I can't really have a meeting because I can't have the dialogue with the four people on the committee back and forth because I'm getting your opinion and I'm giving it to you, and I'm just using examples. And then I call Frank and I tell him what I want to tell him, but I don't really want to say it's out to the public because I'm, I'm not being transparent because I'm just telling Frank, Frank's given me his feedback, but it's without your feedback. And then I want to call Kevin and Kevin, give the same information to Kevin, and I'm going to tell Kevin what Frank and that just said, but Kevin doesn't know what Frank and that, he don't get his feedback. And I've done this whole thing, instead of just meeting with the committee and discussing with the four of you and having you all information, I'm, I'm, I'm avoiding transparency in doing it the way you're suggesting.
So then have a meeting with the four. Did you just say we couldn't do it?
Okay, we're not getting anywhere, we're not getting, we're just going back and forth, both sides make a lot of sense.
I need to understand. At the meeting with the four people.
I haven't heard from Donna yet or Ms. Foster or Frank on this one, I have four people that want to, want to transparent, open to the public. Got it?
The way that a real committee system works is that it's a tribe, like a chain of command. A committee meeting is with board members and administrative liaison, and ideas are thrown out there. Some of them are absurd ideas, some of them are radical ideas, some of them involve closing all schools and having just three schools the size of Wilbur, Tuscan. Some of them get legs, get on an agenda and come to a meeting like this, which is always by law advertised to the public and there's a full public discussion. A great example would be the discussion of policy oh one five five, this discussion you're in right now. It came out of committee, it got legs in committee, it was presented to the board and the board will discuss it tonight. As evidenced by the last twenty minutes. And you may kill it, you may applaud it, you may revise it, you can do whatever you want because you are the Board of Education and the public is here. Now, if the idea was so radical or silly that it didn't get any legs out of committee, it would stay quietly in that room, which is with four board members and your finance liaison, your curriculum liaison, your personnel committee liaison, and it dies there. And it doesn't come out, it doesn't get presented to the board because it was never going anywhere to begin with. So that's how a normal committee meeting works, it's committee discussion, if it flies, it gets on a recommendation for the agenda meeting, it gets discussed here. If it gets past that, it goes on for action consideration next Tuesday. It's three steps, committee, agenda meeting, action meeting. That's the traditional, typical committee structure, that's what we're talking about. The other option is to essentially have two agenda meetings. The first agenda meeting is broken down committee by committee, then you do it again tonight, and then next week it's on for action. Yes, that is more inclusive of the public, but is it meaningfully inclusive? Well, that's your decision, you guys were elected, not me. I'm just telling you how it works in some districts and how it works in other districts.
Thank you, now, Tom. Yes.
My question is, you cannot go into executive session or closed session because it wasn't advertised that way?
You can't go into an executive closed session if it's not an issue that, yeah, because of the specific reasons.
Okay, so if it were advertised that it's a committee meeting of the committee from seven to seven thirty or seven to eight and then it's an open meeting from eight to whatever, is that legal?
You wouldn't need to advertise that, first of all.
Okay.
Because you can have a normal committee meeting from seven to eight and then have the hybrid public committee meeting at eight o'clock.
So then we could actually advertise for seven thirty and the committee people could get here at seven and, and have their discussion?
You could do that, yes, then you're, then you're kind of, well, then you're duplicating it, but yes, that would be legal.
Isn't that what we do for finances, committee of the whole, we advertise from seven to eight.
It's what you do in the finance committee of the whole scenario, but that, that is also within the confines of the policy.
Okay, so now, my next question is, how much does the advertising cost?
It's, it's not, it's not material, so that's discussable.
Of course it is.
It's, no, it's not, it's, you're talking hundreds of dollars, it's not really, that's, there aren't that many committee meetings.
Okay.
You know, going into the.
There's twenty or thirty of them, you know, of course, twenty or thirty dollars to advertise, it's not that, not that.
Going into the policy, I did not like the idea of closing whatever transpired.
Yeah, you were against it.
I was against, but whatever transpired then, I, I gotta say, I was sold on it. But it's going to be such a problem, and if we can't continue to do like Tom just said, like we did last week, people will be meeting at seven and the public is invited to eight or whatever the case, as long as we're in our.
What is the one of the board?
That's the one, that requires the policy to be changed. Because the policy, the policy as it's written now is more similar to a regulation on executive policy.
Why aren't we changing it with this?
No, we're changing it, but, but the policy, this is, this is a proposed policy, the policy that we have is four pages. It has detailed instructions on, on how many people and who's to be included in each particular committee and this streamlines.
Right, so effectively, the board's will has to be determined on three issues, the streamlining of committees, which you've already basically agreed to agree on. The streamlining of the language, which there doesn't seem to be any discussion or rejection about it, and the back page.
The back page, okay.
And those are all subject to the board's vote, because you're, it's legal of what, the question is what vote comes from, what do you want to get?
I have a question, so using Donna's scenario, we read it's written, does that match with what, the process she just made?
It could, yes, because you could have a traditional small committee meeting at whatever time and then you could advertise, if you chose to, a public portion of that, a public committee meeting afterwards, or on a different night.
And then, and to use this language allows the committee chair and the appetizer to set it up that way?
Yes, you can do that with language exactly as it's written now, if you want.
Needful situation, so there's that, you know, you can still have that open as well as that working session. So the reason I support it is a couple of things. If, if the majority of five hundred districts are doing it, there's something right about the policy and the process, right? So, and if our job as board of ed members is to be working groups and help set and determine things, I think we need that discussion as a board and then share that with the public, so. And I don't think there's any desire to not prove the public, but knowing we do have several other avenues throughout the month that we have it open and nothing's decided, right, nothing's voted on in the committee, right? So it's not creating any policy or anything like that because the point, it's being brought up here, it's discussed openly and there's the public. So I think if it's set up the way that Donna, we presented that way, I think it gives us, the board, the flexibility to meet, you know, the needs we need to discuss as well as making sure we're still open to the public and be able to share ideas.
Chris, the way that it's written now also gives us the opportunity to not have Donna's format, correct? Where we can just have that closed session, right? And that's what I'd like to avoid, right? So I would like it to be, if, if, if we want that practice to be that there's going to be two portions of every committee meeting, closed session and public session.
Have.
For it to be, no, definitively, for it to be saved in here. Because if we go with what's in here, we say we're going to make it a practice to do that, that practice all of a sudden gets thrown out the window six months, a year down the road and all of a sudden all committee meetings are held in closed session. I, again, I, I just think that we should be discussing things out in the open in front of the public. I understand there are certain topics and concerns that need to be addressed. If you want to do closed session, which you're facing, let's write it in for this and change it and make sure that there's a closed session and an open session that everything.
Can you do that, Chris?
The way you could do that is just changing it to saying that may open the meeting, may, may open part or all of the meeting to the public. And all of the meeting meetings have to be open, it doesn't have to be limited to.
Can, can, shall be changed to may, committee meetings may be, may not be or may be open to the public? When you say shall, that means you're not open to the public at all.
Well, you need to have some level of standard. If you have may in all these policies, then you can say it's even more may by eliminating them entirely. It should, you should definitely have, this is how it's normally going to work, so to have too many may's in there kind of defeats the purpose of having a bylaws.
Well, I understand what Kelly's saying, the chair of the closed policy, I wasn't at that meeting, but it's my opinion that the reason there are certain reasons to be able legally to go into closed session are those are the only reasons we should be going into closed session. The public has a right to hear anything else that's discussed, and that's the way I feel. So if the policy stays like this, I agree with everything else except that last sentence, and I would have to vote no if this is the policy that's presented for final reading, and I agree with that.
Is there, I mean, why don't you, why don't we pull the board, unless there are other questions? I sense a four, four coming, just for those who can be attracted, let's take, let's pull the board. And what exactly do you believe from you?
Policy as it's written, yes or no?
Not.
As it's written, not yet.
As it's written, will we modify it?
Well, let's first ask, as it's written, as it's written in your hand, yes.
Which means all meetings are closed.
So that means all meetings have the option.
I understand it, I believe, I understand it.
So, so as it's written is, the clarification is that they do not have to be advertised, they are closed just with the administration, pertinent parties and board members unless it's.
If committee chair decides to have it.
Decides to have it open, okay, that's the way this is, okay.
Matt? Before, before you pull, sorry. There, there are, there are items that will come up in discussion and they. There are items that will come up in discussion, and they point out to one, we're gonna close four schools, three schools, whatever we're gonna do. We're gonna go to another school, which are not gonna meet the test under the state law, the things that you can go in closed session for. Yet, they will strike fear and panic in the community. So I'm gonna opt... I'm gonna vote yes on this because everybody here has an objection to it, can run an open meeting and do as they please. And when one of those subjects come up, if you wanna go into, you have the opportunity to discuss it as a committee with the administration. And maybe shit, you don't vote on it. You present it to the board at an open public meeting. So I think you'll find there are things that may... Steps... I mean, when we had the address, the budget cut, what, seven hundred dollars in the house at that time? Those are the kind of things that when people are throwing out all kinds of ideas, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna do this? Whatever. It's an opportunity for the people who have been chosen to that particular committee to try and get through the process and reach for it in a working-like way and then make a presentation to the board. The committee does not pass the policy by themselves. Whatever the changes you're making, it goes to the full board at a public meeting. And in past years, when there has been a significant enough issue that's been big enough, there has been a committee meeting, or rather, there has been a public meeting that focused on nothing but that single topic. The whole meeting was about that one topic. It was some... Something that was the public deemed that they were greatly concerned about. It was radical. It was something that they maybe didn't understand. And they had as much time as necessary to vet whatever their concerns were at that point. And to sway board members one way during that meeting. And that's happened. I mean, it's happened... I'll go as far back as nineteen... I think it was nineteen eighty-three. I wasn't on the board, but they closed two schools at that point. And there were four or five hundred people at the meeting, but they went through the whole rationale. And sure enough, the enrollment was at the lowest level it had been in thirty years in the district. So there are decisions sometimes that to have a vehicle to try and get focused on coming to some decision that you can present to the whole board, I think is required. Here, every committee has the opportunity to go public. Anytime and as often as they like, for the whole year or one meeting, whatever they choose. And I think it's kind of the best of both worlds.
I agree with Frank. And then another reason is, on Donna's point, where you can have a little closed session, not closed session, but a little meeting start before you even start the regular meeting, okay? To discuss, you know, critical issues. I'm gonna agree with Frank. I would vote just leave it the way it is because it's up to the chair of the committee if they wanna make it public.
And it's not just the chair. You can do the majority.
Right.
Matt?
Got it.
You know, as superintendent, we'll do whatever the board wills, and we've been doing in the past. And I wanna first apologize if anyone thought, hearing that, that what lie was directed towards you.
I knew it wasn't towards me.
In true transparency of what you're talking about, without it being really a facade to the public, is that everything I present to you, aside from the things that Chris says, I have the right to step away from outside in the executive session, that I presented to you the same time as I presented to the public. So you'll hear it at the same time the public hears it. That's true transparency, aside from the five deadly sins. So if there's anything going on, if you want true transparency, that's true transparency. If we meet, I'm not gonna give a heads up that you're gonna hear it at the same time as the public. That's what that policy calls for, under true transparency. That's why I said it's not... It's a facade transparency because we're presenting the information prior to the public hearing it. But an individual, if I can't get feedback from the four committee members, then that's why it doesn't work. If I could present it to the four committee members, hey, this is a good idea. Maybe Frank has a great idea because he was here in nineteen eighty-six, and he knows, hey, we beat that problem by doing this, and then we don't have to do that, and it becomes a moot point. But do you understand what I'm saying? True transparency is, when you get it, aside from those things, at the same time the public gets it.
Want to raise your vote?
So in other words, what we're voting on is this policy as it is right here.
Right. Now, remember, it's up to the committee chair to advertise it, and if they want it made public.
I understand that. So in other words, what you're saying is, if we have a curriculum meeting, okay? And Frank and I decide that we want to advertise it for the public to be there, then you will advertise it.
Yes.
If not, then we're gonna have a curriculum meeting with four people.
No, no, but you can tell me at the beginning of the... You can do it in reverse. You can tell me at the beginning of the...
Or when you want it advertised.
You can tell me that curriculum meetings every Tuesday, or first Tuesday of every month, or whatever it is. You can tell me upfront to advertise it. I'll advertise it. It'll be said and written into the how we do things.
Pretty much every chair. If every chair said they want the committee open to the public...
Then this policy is finished.
But it's there in case.
In case. And it's here basically for negotiations, and as far as I'm concerned, personal.
If I'm understanding the question correctly, the curriculum committee traditionally has the most members. So the question is then, are the standing committee members, the top structure for the curriculum committee the same with all of those members?
Like you're talking about the participants.
The attendees versus members.
They're one of the public committee members. That is technically an illegal bylaw.
But that's what we were doing, where we were having people from the public on the committee. So now, that's illegal, you're saying?
The members of the committee are board members. They were elected. You were elected, and then you were assigned by your president to be on the committee. Now, the public participation, if it's what the committee wants, wonder. When you have a committee of the whole, and you wanna run something by the public, or you have any meeting where you wanna include the public. Thousands of people should be here because it's their taxpayers, money, and it's their children. Those are the two most important things you got, the money and the kids. But they're not members of the committee. They are participants, and it's an important distinction because I know if you get members of the public to advertise them, I know that's what your bylaw says, but that is...
So like in the past, we've had certain members of the public who used to come to every meeting. And they were members of the finance committee. They got there, they got the vote, they got the whole bit. That was illegal.
That was made... It is fine to share things with the public, whether they're beyond the restrictions of the Public Mayings Act, but to just be including them as members, who will stand as the elected officials who are at the table? Even that wasn't what I say, interested in joining the committee. Well, your current bylaw still says that. So yes, everything says that. Now, this bylaw is just illegal in a large circumstance. Non-elected members of the board, unless it's a PTA.
Right now, it's illegal. Why was it going on to some extent?
We had tried to change it. Tried to change it in November two thousand and fourteen.
From the party to that, we didn't. And after that, we didn't. So why are we allowed to continue to be illegal?
Because the board felt strongly that they wanted to continue in calling the members. Called the members, but they're not members. Obviously, only elected officials are members of elected official agency, correct? But I think that it's more important, since you've already all agreed to get rid of that language, you've already agreed to streamline it. I think it would probably be useful to find out where the board stands on that final issue so that we can change the policy, work into the policy, whatever the role of the board is.
I have one more question. Just because in that just desk about curriculum, and that is the biggest one. And that's common, it's just been... It's only to be four people. So if there was a committee meeting called, not open to the public, but just called, so you would have the board members there. Now, can you invite... How do you get... I would assume that you all would be there, because Donna was not here at this point. But at the curriculum meeting, there's usually more technology. There's a presentation, or that they invite people in, whether they're showing testing scores, or whether it's some new product that they're going to do. There are a few of the late... Well, there are a few people who come all the time. There's a math coach, a math teacher that's there all the time, this technology teacher. Are they then included? Or who's included then?
Well, they actually, if I can answer, because almost every curriculum meeting, just like tonight, everyone here is an employee of the board. And except for our radio operator.
She is a employee.
Actually, she's an employee. So even at our curriculum meetings, for the most part, ninety-nine percent of that room are employees of the board because we've had a practice that every school had to send a representative. That was... That's why that room filled up. We know. I wasn't here for the last finance meeting, but policy meeting. It's usually, I mean, we're having is giant conversations about all the public and their exclusion from the meetings. There's never any public at our meetings. I can't... Aside from curriculum, I haven't seen a member of the public at a meeting, a true member of the public at a meeting, and I can't tell you how long. And for anyone else who's here, if I'm having... We're having a meeting, I can ask them to be here as a member of the Board of Education. Even if it's...
Am I not the true member?
So anybody in preference in conversation? Well, it's...
Yes, anybody... Even if it was a closed curriculum meeting, which I promise you that I believe we'll be never having this difference, the same people could be here because we can invite them because they're employees of the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, I'm...
Mr. Perselli?
No.
Mr. Morgen?
No.
Mr. DeGremmer?
You know, I supported it the other night, but I guess it's... I think whoever wants open meetings, you know.
Mrs. Adriani?
Yes.
Mrs. Foster? Solakowski?
Am I deciding vote here or what?
Maybe not.
I'll leave it the way it is. And the reason why I vote it that way, because it's up to the chair of the meeting, of the... Whatever meeting it may be, open it up to the public. If they want to, number one. Number two, they can have a little executive session either before or after.
Just don't call it.
Yeah, don't call it.
No, okay.
Just to be clear, so you know, now have voted for the opportunity to vote and then vote. You still have your personal second?
But it may change by the text.
Oh, since everything's going to end.
I have one more question. Apologize to everybody for not bringing this up before the vote. So this means, if this were to pass, that means that committee meetings would all over be videotaped and put on TV?
They could be videotaped.
Only if they're open to the public. Yeah, they're closed, and they can't be, right?
Oh, then I'm gonna chase my vote. And I was pointing for years, and that was... Ah, the video part didn't come up.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's important.
So I have a question. All right, we have curriculum here, and we have two people, the chair. All right, so here's the question. All right, and you already have it before I ask. What if I want the public there, and he doesn't? What do we do then?
I don't know, Frank. You already voted to keep this.
So what do we do then?
The answer is, because I disagree that the committee chair has not said let's open...
Put the partition up, and apparently, we can each side.
That becomes majority committee, which is beyond...
Can I add something? Do the captain's late interjection, a very important part.
Wow. No, but it makes a lot of sense. If we take that away, and we're going back to the non-transparency, we're not gonna like that. Can we...
Yeah, what do you need, Kevin?
What was true?
You took a straw.
Mr. Horns?
So what was that, Sam?
Let me tell you something. Did that the video meeting?
Yeah, what's the purpose of the statement?
Seven to six.
Kevin brought up the question. You take away the video, and then go years of all that have been...
I know. Because you know I'm gonna mention when it's on this.
If you change your mind about what you're saying, you change it.
Can we just clarify a bit? I'm saying, minutes can be taken with that video. Can you just clarify?
Yeah, explanation. In a normal... What does the normal committee structure, the traditional committee structure, have? Minutes are prepared by the administrative liaison and provided to board members for their consideration prior to the agenda meeting. Then be generated as a public discussion. That doesn't mean that the minutes go on the website or go out to the public. It means that they're shared with the rest of the board for their information in voting on the actions being presented or recommended by the committee.
How many committees? We only do tape recordings.
Yes. Actually, we're buying them all.
Thank you.
But in that case, if... Because Mrs. Solakowski wanted video of the curriculum meetings, they would always be open. According to Frank's promise, they would always be open to the public anyway, and they can be recorded.
Once you make a decision to have any meeting open to the public, certainly record.
Frank just pledged to you that he came to that one.
I know, I heard him.
You see, that's obvious, right?
Good, I'm glad.
I mean, I know my meetings were always open. Mine without...
No, it's already been on videotape. So just don't go there, okay? But you... You're right. What's the...
This is transparency. Wong? It's ours for transparency. Balls and sauces.
All right, so it's...
Balls and sauces.
Chicken, chicken mix.
So for clarification, the committee chair sees it open, it's recorded, and it's available on our website. If it's closed, for whatever reason, just like any other closed, we only have minutes. We don't videos. We don't tape recordings. We do take minutes. We do take minutes.
No, but it's actually, we don't take minutes. We just give the agenda of this committee minutes. However, Joe, we did agree with the board to send out the committee reports so that all members are aware of what might just remind. And Kelly, you're probably not aware of it because she saw it in November last year.
Yeah, I did get a hard copy of that, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the portal. Just so we can share it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
And what else?
You're five-three, but with two possible change votes. And so rather than do this based upon a defeat of a majority next week, if that's the way the board is going, it... No, you don't vote. It'd be better to just repeat.
Mr. Weber up for suggestion, if we do a survey.
That's pretty funny, thank you.
One question.
Something on the agenda for next week that the board's going to support, whatever that new debate?
Kelly forced to sound.
Aren't we still able to modify this to accommodate?
I think you should...
Yeah, but I would rather accommodate, make the changes tomorrow. Have them in the packet for the board on Friday and have it go out to the public in its what is going to be, for the moment, final version for Tuesday, rather than change it on Tuesday.
No, no, change it. Now, we're talking about changing it. Can we change it tonight? accommodate all the issues that are going to be brought up tonight? To have members vote yes or voting no.
Yes, absolutely.
So why don't we ask the individual members who are voting no, what we need, how we need... And it may be changing two words, which may be acceptable to certain board members. Are there actual options for Solakowski? Nancy, is there a change that we make that would make you a champion?
Right now, it says committee meeting shall not be open to the public except that a majority of the committee or the chairperson may open the meeting to the public or invite persons. I don't understand that question, that sentence anyway, because the meeting isn't advertised. If the committee chair and the three other members decide to open it to the public, what public would be there? So I'm...
Well, that would... If it's going to be open to the public, then it would be... That was important. But based on what Nancy, Kevin, and Matt are saying... be, that was more important, but based on what Nancy, Kevin, and Matt are saying, my understanding is that you would like that sentence to say committee meetings shall be open to the public, except as provided in the open public meetings, right? That's what you want, right? And then the question is, who agrees with you? Because I don't care. It's a question of what is the will of the board. The other two pieces are pieces that you had to do. You had to streamline, you had to get rid of some of the silliness and some of the language that made it more confusing to clarify. But this sentence, whatever you want to do.
But would you add a sentence regarding, you know, the fact that committee of the whole can be scheduled for executive session or.
That's already, that's already, the board reserves the right to meet and work as a committee of the whole. And anytime you're meeting as a committee of the whole, it makes you the board, and that means that the public meetings act as a clause as far as calling an executive session.
Even though Donna voted yes, can we incorporate the pitch? She said, this way, I can do it to everyone.
You can do whatever. Yes, you can change that language or no change.
Yeah, I, I would like to say something that all committee meetings, obviously, change the word however you need to, for, I know personnel does certain meetings that negotiation does not happen in public, but the main word is that the remainder shall have open public session portion of the meeting, at least to summarize the discussions that have taken place amongst the board. So if you do a committee meeting at seven P.M., we have open to the public at eight P.M., and at least we present that with a summary of what was discussed.
I like that, but I like May instead of shall. Shall, I think, is constraining you to do something that you don't want to do. I think May, you can, you may not, you may not. Shall need to happen.
May, can.
Put you back.
Okay, should we shall? I think, once we make it may, I think then, as I mentioned earlier, what happens, we always have the open public sessions, and then after six months, they fall off, and we start saying, then only come to the public.
I would rather have to have a shall or a shall not, so that you don't.
And, and if you have the shall and the public doesn't show up, you go home and.
Well, if, if council says shall, or what, then. I'll have something to you tomorrow, we'll go in the packet on Friday, and it'll be up for first year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, curriculum. Any, any questions on curriculum on the board? Curriculum one through eight.
Just have a question regarding four.
Yes, ma'am.
And five and six. It's just, we've had a number of agendas from previous quarters, and, you know, we were told that it was to catch up from Aladdin, for giving writing for a number of years. How, I mean, I'm sure this is well over what his budget, and is this the end of it, or is this bringing us up to date of where all of the current?
Mr. Mayor, how much do we have, do we have the cycle curriculum, do I make sure?
For next year, we, we reduced it up to a hundred thousand. I had a discussion with Mr. Kitchell today, discussing this, this issue, and also, what she advised is that this large volume that we're doing now will accomplish, we're catching down. So next year, we can introduce, working on a regular basis, it will be higher than what we're expecting for some of the.
And I think what we're seeing too is, this was a catch-up here because it's a few factors, which we haven't been, that was.
Thank you. Any other questions on curriculum? No, okay, we'll go to the next one. Okay, athletics. One through three. Any questions?
I have a question on the athletic trainer.
I.
The job description, the original job description.
That's number three.
So is this, can we discuss this during athletics, or are we waiting until certificate approval?
If it's on number three in athletics, I guess we discuss it now.
Yeah, because this is, is this the revised one from, make it right?
This was the original, the revised one went home on Friday.
Okay.
But this was left out. And so I asked that it be provided to me today, so that it had yet, and so that's the last one that we provided.
Are we getting another one, or?
You have.
You have.
It's in the schedule.
The, um, the new one went home.
Okay.
But they have to.
Okay, okay, all right. Because I did like the part that they need to be, they had to have some good sense of humor, it'd be kind of carrying. It'd be helpful to everyone.
So Bobby Martin's not applying.
Okay, that's all right, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the, number three, I'm sorry.
Um, number nine, on the athletic, on the athletic trainer. It says responsible to provide coverage for home events, and I'm assuming that's home athletic, that's not just a home event. So I don't know if that needs to be put in there, it might be redundant. And travel with varsity football, but it doesn't say about traveling with any other team.
The, that's because the, I guess what is standing orders with those athletic training programs, that you always, because of the high contact line of injuries for varsity football, you always have a trainer on staff, or home and away games, where if there's a cross game going on and a field hockey game going on in the same park, they don't have to necessarily be stationed there, they're in just in the general vicinity. But for football, they have to stand on the sideline. And in fact, the home team for football has to have docked as well.
Right. Okay, now, in the old one, it says something about practice sessions, it says something about, um, um, I don't, I don't see anything on here about practice. Unless I missed. I see home events and travel with varsity football, but I do not see anything about practice. I do not see anything in there about having a member of the opposite sex, if that's an issue. I don't see that in here.
I, I wouldn't think that's an issue, because we don't have any, at this time, we don't have any female flight transfers.
No, but if you may need a female personnel present, who wouldn't have to separate from this specific job description. On the old one.
But it's also on the old one that the athletic trainer will attend all practice sessions, which is obviously impossible in a district of this. So don't.
Well, I'm not saying attend practice, but it doesn't say anything about being available at, at practice.
I think that the problem with the old one is, you have so much detail, and they have to paint yourself into a legal corner. So if a parent says, well, it says there can be, well, practices, if you wasn't at the practice, now you have a problem. So when you have more generalities, it allows you to cover yourself.
Okay.
Usually at the end of all the job descriptions, isn't there the final sentence that says any other duties are assigned by some company? So if the, the athletic director wanted a trainer as specific, a vet that's not specifically delineated that they could.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, the old number nineteen.
This doesn't have it, and it's any other duties responsibility, it doesn't say anything that's assigned by.
Did you create that incident? Yeah, fourteen.
And again, this is, this is the key description, and we're discussing hiring a third one. So I want to make it very clear that three of them, no one has seniority for the public, and no one is a lead, because I'm, I'm, would not approve somebody then saying, well, I'm management and I supervise the others. So we have three people, whatever the pace is, whatever the salary is, whatever the pay scale is, that they, it's just three people. There is not one that's a lead or in charge.
Because we don't have a job description for.
Have to negotiate anyway.
And since the third one is being discussed, it probably wouldn't be a good idea, I would think. I mean, if a thirteen-year-old girl gets hurt, which, should we feel comfortable having an actualist or a man or, it's not the same.
You can't say that.
I mean, I think what is, what I.
Not saying gender discrimination.
You don't want them alone, right? You don't have.
Okay, right, yeah, because even a doctor would say. Well, if we could say that, I think you should say that there should be a little things to. But there's also the balance of urgent care. You know, you, you need to have that trainer being able to respond, which is creating to make sure that the right group of people is around. Because you're talking about an injury more than you're talking about comfort. They're not comfortable beginning after her. Seriously. So.
We wind up with a case where that happens, usually typically, I could be wrong, typically they would get hurt out of, right? They're not getting hurt somewhere, you know, a local restaurant, or you can't like, right? Yeah, we could maybe, but they don't, like, they can't bring out, so there's some people around. Now, whether or not they need to bring that person to the locker room, then they're not looking at urgent care, then you're looking at cases of, I need to put this student in the locker room, which is like, all the time.
Well, there's also the reevaluation process, there's also the rehab process, even though they're not physical therapists, they do a lot of.
That's, you know, that's what I'm trying to make, they do a lot of preventative care where they're one-on-one with the person regardless of gender, because they're certified staff. They have history, background checks, they're certified there, they're not volunteers.
And there's a whole New Jersey licensure issue surrounding drugs, for any athletic trainer.
I was following up. So the, the change to this would be out of number fourteen, with a, the disclaimer that says.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, finance, one through, one through eight. And action, and action number one, which is. Okay, can I get a motion to move number one?
Morgan will move number one.
Sir, thank you.
Second.
Any separations? Need discussion?
The record will reflect that Mrs. Morgan is saying no for bash versus.
Okay, so we have Ms. Morgan to, uh, move the motion.
First, silly.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes. Yes.
Morgan.
Yes, on all of the patch, obviously.
Same. Sillikowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Resolution one.
Thank you. Okay, non-certified personnel office, one, three, three. Any questions?
Yes, that's the goal.
I'm looking at the blank sheet, there's something.
Basically, what is Susan?
Stephanie.
Number three?
Yeah.
Stephanie. She is retired, so.
She places everything on the agenda, on the certified.
Yeah, no, I know what she does, I just want to show her what it's.
So this will all be filled in for next Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Uh, non-certified personnel operation. Any discussion? We have nothing to discuss. Yes. Okay, Roman numeral number twenty-two, non-certified personnel other, one through, one through six by the looks of it. Any discussion?
I have a question about the, the, we have, um, we have the, we have the replacing Hanson, um, from September to. You're over one month. A month personnel, we're not on that one? Yeah, correct, we're not there yet. Okay. But number five, under.
Okay, certified personnel. One through. One through eleven. Any.
Well, my, my question, why, why isn't the same person replacing Hanson for another month?
Why, because she's no longer available. She was in a long-term position, the long, the person out on leave extended a month, the long-term sub could only extend a week.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then we brought someone else in for the last month that we're voting today, so that we don't go another week without someone in the position. So we only lost two days.
These are not, this is somebody from the outside coming in as a long-term, it's not picking her up, watching her for work or anything. It's a lot of stuff that I don't have to leave.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have an action item over there on certified personnel. One through three. Any discussion? Can I get a motion to move one through three?
It's loaded.
Thank you.
Okay.
For silly?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Hoppin?
Yes.
Sillikowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
First one, Morgan.
Let's get back to the regular agenda, certified personnel, one through eleven. Any discussion?
Number eight, I'm looking at these long-term, long-term subs. I'm in the right place now, right? They're getting, a long-term substitute is getting prorated on these salaries.
Who are you talking about? Prorated for the time that they're in there, correct?
Right, okay, now, it, some of them don't have a certificate listed. Some of them don't have a name either, but some of them don't have a certificate listed.
Some of them are still blank. We still have several that should be filled in, but that we don't have the names yet. So I'm not sure if those are weird.
Well, there's one that's named, but there's no certificate. So we, are they, like, working on a substitute certificate?
Which, can you count down the toss, which one?
I mean.
We don't have letters on here. Um, one, two, three, four. Well, number four and number, well, number four doesn't have the name, I don't know what T S P is, but number five.
Okay. I'm, I have to get it, we might have left it off, we just missed that. I can tell you number one also needs to come on. That's already been filled.
Missing three, anybody?
I mean, if these are new teach, if these are new kids coming out, then they wouldn't have a registered certificate anyway, but.
The long-term sub, they should, they should, there should be a certificate there, so I think.
Yeah, but they wouldn't have finished the mentoring process, I mean, they would have just finished college, so they wouldn't have a certificate as of yet, like, one has a provisional, a provisional down here on one of them.
But it should still be noted where they're at in the process.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Instead of voting on the entire group like this, it means, you made a good point, and we have eight, A, B, C, D, E, F, on there?
It usually is, I'm not sure if we left it off because.
Because in the past, board members did separate some of the.
Yes, that should be on there, and like I said, the first one should come off, and the blanks will be filled in, or about to be straightened, or be in how, or some other position.
Any other questions? Certified personnel, I know Mr. Weber will ask me to read number four, and that's two there. Okay, non-certified personnel transportation. Number one. Discussion? Okay, number twenty-five, supplies, equipment, and services, one, two, three.
I would like to have number one, that says by sale or donation of disposal, if we can sell, great if we can, and Mrs. Keeler has, has a connection with someone who needs books in another country, so I would like them to be designated to go to her.
Very good.
Thank you.
I believe about fifteen years ago, we did that, we donated to, I don't know what country.
Well, if we can sell them, fine.
A whole container.
If we can't sell them, then.
Yeah, the problem is, who's going to pay for transportation?
Number one. Algebra and family living. Oh, that's all, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
They had, they voted it up. And the state actually paid, the government, but we.
I'm working my angle, sorry.
As long as it's good, it doesn't plus the.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's the next, that was the next step, right? Thank you.
Okay, transportation, number one, I think he's got it. Okay, Miss Langius, one through nine. Discussion?
Number five.
Sam Chalmers.
I thought the calendar was.
I have. Morgan, you're right, it's not here, no? Okay, so, we'll be on the action for next Tuesday, for the publics. Okay, board secretary and board business, anything? No.
Number five is move the board, move the calendar, and number nine is move the calendar.
Just in case.
Okay.
We're voting on advice. This may be change your mind after you listen to our comments. No, don't correct.
And we're moving the letters, we have no slide.
Yes, Miss Ingrid.
I don't go to too many township council meetings, but when you go in the back of the meeting hall, they have the agendas for the meeting. So, you pick up your agenda. Last, somebody's talking about all the sets for paper. So, my question is, we're providing everybody with everything, even though it's been on the website. So, the township only provides an agenda. I'm just wondering if we should discuss that.
Let me say this, the last Strauss estimate workshop I went to, there were districts that were not supplying the bill lists, and I believe it was litigated, and we got to provide the list.
Your question is for board members specifically, correct?
No, it's members of, members of the public. We said, if you go to township, we pick up the agenda, you don't get all this.
I thought you were talking about just for, for board members, that the piles needs to have attachments, if they're noted, they need to be actually attached. That is unfortunate, because it is an extra expense, and obviously, the vast majority of people can access it through your website, but there is a recent decision.
I understand that, I wasn't trying to be opaque, I was just trying to say.
Any other discussion? Okay, here in the press conference, any school recommendations? Anybody?
Hey, how are you guys doing? You're not speaking? I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I just wanted to speak to the athletic trainer job description. I've met with the athletic trainers on numerous occasions, they are overindated, the board doubled the middle school sports over the years. I know it's an item at a different venue as well, however, I wanted to mention that their recommendation to the director of athletics was three additional. Okay, so I know that in the budget, it says one, and I'm assuming that was administratively proposed, but from the work that they do, the concussion laws that have changed, doubling of the middle schools, this is a job description, it doesn't speak to how many, but I'm just saying that I know the discussion here was one, but the two athletic trainers that have been here for years, you know, have discussed that they felt one would not be enough, so I'm just putting it out there, so when the budget's done, that's taken into consideration. The next item was just on the action item agendas for tonight regarding three B. I see it says masters, step four. I was just curious of where the step four, just a rationale on that.
Okay.
That's, that's on the action for tonight, the items for tonight that was voted on, certificated, number three, B. Is it covering of the, of the guidance, long-term sub?
So.
I, I'm just curious of the rationale of step four.
I'd have to go back and look at the recommendation for employment without having it in front of me, I don't remember the specific. I believe they got, I believe it was time, or questioning.
Yeah, I was just curious of where the employment came from. Yeah, like, that, I was just curious of how long, are you saying that they were given three years of credit for working somewhere?
Correct, correct.
Why is it just three? Well, it's, that's, I'm, it could be three, I'm saying it should be on four, whatever, I'm just curi, I'm curious of where that, what the rationale was for the placement. Is it for previous experience?
Yes, for previous experience.
And we have.
Yes.
By union, we can, by union or guidance, you can go up to, what, that's not, is that?
Not really. That's the question, I think the question is whether there's, whether there is four years' experience or not.
Yeah, I'm just curious if that was here or somewhere else. I was just curious. So, I just wonder, just previous experience.
I think it was multiple places. Again, without having it specifically in front of me, but from my, my recollection, after, with all of them that I look at, I believe that there were multiple places that that was drawn from.
Okay.
We could look lower.
No, I'm just curious.
But they were entitled, so I, I, I think it was justified, otherwise it wouldn't be on there. I can clarify it, but.
Yeah, that's, just looking for clarity.
Going back and clarifying, but I do recall looking at it, and I, I believe it was multiple locations.
What do we do for a fee on normal circumstances?
Up to step four.
Up to step four.
For previous.
So, that means step four.
I'm including step four.
I just, I also just wanted to recognize the transportation department. I know on yesterday was a very hectic day, so I just wanted to mention that, I know there was some discussion on that section. And the calendar, I just was curious if there was any survey results, I know that, you know, the community as well as staff had, you know, completed the survey, so I wasn't sure if, if that was going to be shared, or is it just being adopted the way it was?
Yes, Mrs. Saldina will distribute the survey, the results. I will pass it on. Everybody pass.
You said. Can I have a coffee?
Do you want one?
They did a survey monkey.
That was bad.
This is helpful. How they're nearly even.
So, on the calendar, it's, the board is voting on Tuesday on, I'm sorry, on, on the calendar, the board is voting next Tuesday on the original proposed calendar.
And this is, all this does is not, doesn't bind the board any way, it just gives you an indication of the public's opinion of the district.
This was not staff, this was public, or this is anybody?
Anyone who has, people, there was people, I can tell you, that probably voted for Arkansas.
Lois Frank said, five different votes for one.
We don't provide us service there.
Yes. No, but there's like a, there's an advocacy, there was a father's advocacy group from foreign states that was upset about the calendar, and they waited.
This what is there.
And last but not least, I just wanted to recognize the fact that the board spent an hour tonight on policy discussion, but I've heard nothing regarding park. I know Mr. Saldina thinks I'm a broken record, and we've had these conversations, but I just wanted to address it with the board. I don't know if any of you have taken the park assessment, or if you have any concerns with it, especially Ms. Sandron.
I failed it.
Being a previous educator, right, an educator. It has created a large impact in the district as far as instructional time, and it's in every district, and it's not the administration's fault, or, you know, the board's fault, or the staff's fault, or the students' fault. It's the mandates that we've been provided, however, I've never heard really this board discuss it, and to me, I thought 2010 was the most difficult period of time that I went through, because we went through seven million dollars in budget cuts and layoffs, and had to tell people that they no longer had a job after 23 years. But to me, this is the biggest impact that education has faced since I've been in it. And I have deep concerns about it, I don't know how the board feels about it, I don't know what homework they've done on it, but I have discussed the resolution piece to it, because teachers are being approached by parents on what they should do, and I feel it's putting them in an uncomfortable situation, because we do not have an opt-out regulation in New Jersey, but over ninety districts have approved a resolution, and I think proactively, it takes them out of that uncomfortable situation, or to put themselves where they are liable for what they say. I know that the DOE and so forth have different opinions, and it's funny, Mr. Meyer mentioned Strauss and S M A, they too have an opinion on this, that they've put out to the school boards and so forth, but over ninety so far have one, and in Middlesex today, North Brunswick and Edison, I have a copy, if you'd like to read it. I also received what the superintendent from East Brunswick sent out, I don't see the policy, but I see what the students will be doing if they receive a refusal letter in alternate locations, and Woodbridge as well in the county. I have concerns that whether you're against it or for it, or, doesn't make a difference, is the parents right, and I'm not here to tell them to do it or not do it, I'm just concerned that the educator's going to be in the position of how to answer those questions, because they're receiving contact. So, I don't know who to direct them to, because I, I can't, you know, I don't know the answer. So, I just wanted to share with the board, because it would be something I know that the board would have to approve, so I just wanted to share that.
Well, the first point, the first thing to discuss was, has the board ever had any discussion about the park? And they have, because it's part of the goals, it was part of our district, goal building retreat, in which there was at least an hour more of discussion about the park. And myself and Mr. Parton provided our overview of the park, and, you know, I, I, you know, I said park is like Livers. Some people say they hate it, but I've never had it, so it's hard for me to have an opinion on it, because it hasn't come out. But there is an issue of complacency that truly is something that is a concern for the board, and binds the board in ways. So, districts that have created a practice outside of the policy, without adopting the policy, are in violation of their own policy, and, you know, I leave that to, for first discussion. So, if I said that in policy, whichever, everyone in Middlesex County uses the Strauss estimate, because I surveyed them on it, and the policy says they will administer all tests as directed by the Commission of Education, but they're going to do this, which is an exception to that, outside of that, with outside policy, then they're violating their own policy. And that's where, you know, Mr. Parton has to advise the board. You know, I, I, you know, in all my discussions with the board, I, I have said that there is, I have serious questions about the park, the way it's been administered, the information that's come out, the way it has been presented, the hidden costs that have impacted not only Old Bridge, but many districts, but at the end of the day, I have an administrative code that says I have to administer it. Now, we don't know what the ramifications of that are beyond that, we haven't seen what the financial impact will be. Maybe those districts, when they get stated, won't get stated, I don't know. Mr. Parton, do you have any other?
Yes. Ms. Saldina, you made a, a good point, especially about using the word, the words, but we have these mandates, that's exactly what we have, is mandates, and there are some misguided union representatives, not you, obviously, but there are, the NJEA is taking a stance, New Jersey 101.5 seems to be completely obsessed by it. Let me be real clear, state and federal law says you're taking the park, and you're taking it. State and federal law said there's no opt-out, and there's no opt-out. Now, if a kid skips school on Tuesday with his or her parent's permission, then the kid's not here Tuesday. If Tuesday's a park day, then the kid's not here on Tuesday the park day, and that is a parental decision. You have the right to be as good or as bad a parent, you have the right to your opinions, you have the right to send your kid or not send your kid. But there is no opt-out. There is a bill before the assembly that has no legs and is out of time to create an alternative educational placement during the park and mandated in every district. That would also require revisions of state and federal law, those are always quick. The fact is, that we don't have these discussions about whether kids should have to take math. Some kids are going to be poets, and they're going to be brilliant poets, and they can't add, and they never will be able to add, but that doesn't mean we let them out of math. This is required, and it's going to be brutal this year, and there's no question, no one believes the park is perfect, or the park's going to be easy. Yes, a lot of people, a lot of PhDs have taken the grade-eight park and failed, a lot of people have missed third-grade park questions, and there's going to be a curve at some point after the park is administered, for better or for worse. But the charge that's being led by the Bloomfield and Princeton Boards of Education is a charge to, one, violate state regulations, two, violate state law, and three, antagonize Governor Christie, another great idea. The fact is that state testing is tied to administration of the Common Core, and the park, I'm sorry, state aid. State funding is tied to administration of the Common Core, park is part of administration of the Common Core. By the way, the ASP tests, tests last year were fully aligned to Common Core also, so all of the park, the people who want to be hysterical about park, it's not that different, it's just on computers. It's going to be a horrible transition, it's going to be very difficult, and the media frenzy, and the social media frenzy is just making it worse.
Chris, I just, I just want to touch on that, because that's kind of an insult to the eight hundred teachers and three hundred support staff, because they already have lost instructional time, they are very stressed by the situation, to say that they're creating a frenzy, they're only reacting to what's being placed upon them, so.
So, it is being placed upon them, and compliance with the law is kind of the priority.
and they can't add, and they never will be able to add. But that doesn't mean we let them out of math. This is required, and it's going to be brutal this year. And there's no question, no one believes that park is perfect, or that park's going to be easy. Yes, a lot of people, a lot of PhDs have taken the grade eight park and failed. A lot of people have missed third grade park questions. And there's going to be a curve at some point, after the park is administered, for better or for worse. But the charge that's being led by the Bloomfield and Princeton Boards of Education is a charge to, one, violate state regulations, two, violate state law, and three, antagonize Governor Christie, another great idea. The fact is that state testing is tied to administration of the Common Core. And the park, I'm sorry, state aid. State funding is tied to administration of the Common Core. Park is part of administration of the Common Core. By the way, the ASP tests, tests last year were fully aligned to Common Core also. So all of the park, the people who want to be hysterical about park, it's not that different, it's just on computers. It's going to be a horrible transition, it's going to be very difficult. And the media frenzy, and the social media frenzy, is just making it worse.
Chris, I just, I just want to touch on that, because that's kind of an insult to the 800 teachers and 300 support staff, because they already have lost instructional time. They are very stressed by the situation. To say that they're creating a frenzy, they're only reacting to what's being placed upon them, so.
It is being placed upon them, and compliance with the law is kind of the priority.
Right, but testing for 40 days is not realistic or rational in my view as an educator. But I'm not arguing the point of opt-out, I agree with you, you know, that there is no legislation, you know. But what I'm saying is that you and I both know that if a staff member responds to a parent in the inappropriate way, or telling them what to do, that they could be accountable, correct?
Why would they? If the, if the staff member was.
If they don't know, not everybody's an educator.
If the staff member was asked, "I don't like the math curriculum, and I really don't like the way it's going," would the staff member direct them to the building leadership? Or would they give an answer?
So that's what I'm asking you, they, they don't know. So are they supposed to go to the building leadership?
Yes.
Okay, and.
I met with the building leadership last week, and I told them to address any park-related opting or out, or any objections from parents, to get it in writing, whatever their concern is, and present it to my office and Dr. Hoover's office.
Okay, and, and Sam, just to follow up with that. After that meeting last Wednesday, the administrators, many of them had faculty meetings that were scheduled on Monday that were canceled, which was going to include the training with their staff. So some of them took place this afternoon, and many are moving the training to part of the PLC, and then doing some of what was planned at the PLC on another day where they rescheduled the staff meeting in order to get it in sooner rather than later. So, okay, so then I guess my next question is, what is the plan? Is that. If they have any question, or they get something in writing, they submit it to us, and then we'll deal with it, based on what the concerns are? So my concern is that March 2nd, a parent walks in and says to us, you know, "The teacher, my child's not going to take the thi-" My question is, will the teachers be informed prior to that, if a student's going to be in their room, not in their room, non-testing, testing, whatever it be, alternate location, will the teachers be aware of that prior to the test?
Yes. It's the same, we've had the same protocols in place for the past two years for the NJAS. We've had people opt, who want to opt out of the NJAS. They were still put in a testing environment, and whether they took the test or not, it was up to them. But we're not going to put them in makeups, because that's just an additional issue.
So parents opted out if New Jersey asked? There is no opt-out, right?
There is no opt-out, right?
From the director, from the DOE, the IRS, right, said, "You should provide makeup," doesn't say you have to. So if a parent sends me a letter saying, "My child's going to be absent on this day of your administration's fourth grade test," then when the kid comes back, after, it's not like that to me, but it's been perceived that, of course. Then that's just, again, antagonizing now, and punishing your child for a parental decision.
I just, I just tried to be proactive, and I know that a month ago, because, you know, unfortunately, they don't all call the superintendent. You know, they call a different office, so they have concerns. And I feel that they are warranted in a lot of ways, and it's not just Old Bridge. I totally get that.
It's not even Old Bridge. This is, this is, they might, they must take place on the staff.
But I also feel the Board of Education represents the students, and I just feel that this is, to me, one of the biggest pieces of education right now. And I feel like they need to be aware of it.
But we don't know what the ramifications are, and I'm not comfortable playing Russian roulette with education.
I'm saying in general, I'm saying in general, that I want them to just be aware, that's my point.
But a suggestion to deviate from the administrative code, which other districts have done, without knowing what the penalty shall be, is like playing Russian roulette, you don't know what's going to happen. I could say, you know what, here's the policy, and it's based upon the administrative code, and I want to be a nice guy and say that kid who comes in, I'm going to do something else with them, because, and, you know, just my paternal instinct, I would like that. But I don't know what impact it will have on the taxpayers and the children at Old Bridge afterwards. I don't know. And neither does Bloomfield, neither does Del Ran, neither does Princeton.
Okay, can I just leave with you, North Brunswick and Edison's policies from the board this month? Or for the board members to review? Because they're local districts, I know we like to stay.
It's a policy practice.
This year is a resolution regarding the administrative park assessment. This is Policy Alert 205 from North Brunswick. I just want to share it, so, because these, you know, I know Middlesex was late to the game, but these are two that have come out. There's 90 on, obviously, other websites.
Just for you, so you're aware, the president of the Middlesex County Superintendent's Association has put out a blanket stance from all superintendents, that I imagine she got from the superintendents, that says there is no.
There's no. It's just interesting, in all of our districts, having discussions, and there are important discussions. But ultimately, ultimately, the discussion is based on the question of do we, or do we not follow state law? A lot of times, that's a pretty easy discussion to have. In this case, it has taken on a life of its own because of the dramatic change that everyone's dealing with, and the uncertainty of it. And it's tough.
Can I, I want to ask, if I ask Chris, I just want to make sure I'm correct. I'm not saying I'm for it, or against it, like it or dislike it, just as far as responsibility or means. The state is saying we have to do it. We have to do it.
Yes.
And if we were to provide a different course for that student that doesn't take it, then we're in violation of state function.
That's correct. And you're also encouraging other students the second day to say, "Well, Johnny got to hang out over there, do whatever it was, other than standardized testing." Those students really look forward to standardized testing.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting situation, because obviously, I feel as though the situation, the state is making the local districts hold it, leaving them holding the bag to be the bad guy. Just, you know, representatives of the state put a salary cap in for superintendents. Anyone who violated that salary cap, they came down really hard. They didn't want to have local control at that level. But here, they're kind of saying, "Well, we don't really want to say what you should do." This, you know, and you have districts who are now, you say 90 of them, are violating the state code, but the state's not coming down and saying anything right away what they're, what they're planning to do.
Well, I, I mean, I've seen mixed things. I've seen, you know, from Strauss estimate to this one, to that opinion, that they can't hold, you know, the funding, they can't do this, they can't do that. I mean, Christie was in Iowa yesterday saying that, you know, he does not, he has issued a Common Core again. So here we are revising our curriculum, going through this whole piece. But initially, 26 schools in park, I mean, 26 states, now 10 states. New Jersey is still one of them. You know, at some point, somebody has to stand up for the situation, and that's my concern, is just that the board is educated, because there is an impact in the district. Moving a computer teacher out, so that students can take a test, rolling through 2,300 kids at the high school, those kids will not be in computer labs. You know, laptops, iPads have to be configured, we have those conversations. I understand that, I know they have to administer the test, but there is an impact to the staff. And not only that, it's March, it's May, so you're taking an AP student out of their AP courses, like AP Computer Science, or you can give a test, when they're actually going to be taking the AP test for 10 days, that they need preparation for, they actually get college credit. We're giving a biology test in the state of New Jersey that nobody does anything with, that takes two days. We gave the PSA, you know, AT, which I thought was a good thing two years ago when we brought it in, and that takes a day, you know? And then you have New Jersey ASK science is still running in grade four and A. You know, it's just, there is an instructional impact. So when you say, you know, that, you know, it creates panic, there is panic. And rightfully so, because SGOs, SGP's, testing, park, and then parents saying, "What should we do?", it creates that. And so they're in the trenches every day, they ask the question, "What should they do?" Just want to bring it to the attention that they're just looking for some correction.
And I think your organization, and the overall organization, NJEA is doing a valiant job in fighting that fight. So is the School Administrator Association, so is the Principal Association. They're all doing it at the, you know, at the Trenton level. But, you know, it's hard to say as superintendent schools that I think that this Board of Education should violate the law.
I'm not asking you to tell them that, I'm asking them to be.
But by saying, but by saying, "Your kid doesn't have to take the test, and let him do something else," I'm telling them that violate the law. And it's a tough position that we are put in.
It is a tough position. And I feel like 90 people have addressed 90 districts, but.
Well, I think the bottom line is, you want to know that your teachers will have some kind of unified response to tell the parent.
Yeah, it's uncomfortable.
But, but it's uncomfortable everywhere, that doesn't make it, it doesn't make it a good thing. You can't tell the parent, "Don't send your child to school," because then you're prohibiting their opportunity for education.
Right.
Then it's an unexcused absence. So there's no, it's no punitive issue, but it's an attendance issue if they decide to take their child out for five days to go to Disney. Now you're out six days, seven days, now you have a problem. So you can't tell them to take their child home. You can't say, "Come in, we'll provide something alternative." If you read the thing that you gave us, it says, "You're not getting anything that's alternative educationally, independent." So you're going in to sit and do nothing that's necessarily related to any curriculum anyway. So we're all stuck between a rock and a hard place.
But it's a procedure.
And I, and in Old Bridge, I may be stuck even more than anyone else, because it's my number one district goal. So if I say that, as superintendent, you can tell kids not to take the park, and we don't have the 95% compliance, and we have, whether the QSI points are getting taken away from us, or whatever it is, then the board can say to me, "Well, Dave, your recommendation to everyone violated the objective we gave you, your goal."
Yeah, but I don't think any of those superintendents or districts told people to opt out. It said that they were, you know, mandated to take the park test, all of that is written. And then it's the discussion of, you know, if you do, if your child does not take the test, this is what will happen. So.
We don't have a thing, a policy, anything, if your child doesn't take math this year, what, if your child is supposed to take math? Again, I'm not saying I'm for it, against it, whatever, that's.
It's a hard, it's a hard, you know, deal, Sal, because even like, to say, then I'm going to say, "You can read a book," is giving you a soft opt-out.
Right, and you can't do that.
Yeah, but you can't make a child sit and stare either. So, you know, that's, it becomes, you know, to me, at some point, you know, it.
We learned I can't make a child eat lunch either, but I.
Right, but I mean, it becomes, you know, it becomes more than just, a policy, I could tell you that, but.
Well, the parents also want to save them, because they don't want their child, and these parents that are asking questions do not want their child to take the test, but they don't want their child home. So they, they want, they want to know that.
Someone that worked on it, and then have to take time off.
But, but I, but I understand that, that that's the point.
No, I think, I think the point actually is, is that some PTA and some people have said that the administrator told them that they have to sit and stare. Some people have come to me and said that administration told them to keep their kid home. So I think the question that came over the last few weeks was that, was what are we doing? We don't know how to, to, to address it, so I think that.
So the one thing, one way it could be addressed is that if, in the, in the past, anyone who took the injury, asked, maybe even before, it was, it was a standard practice that, you know, you kept, you kept a book with you, and you read when you finished with your test. So you couldn't walk around, you couldn't make a classroom, you couldn't finish. So let's say you put a child who says, "I'm opting out." Of course, you could, if I could, if I could straighten. Says to him, "Here's the test, here's how you log on." The kid said, "I'm done, I start reading the book." You're not violating the policy, because you said to him, you can, you're giving him the test, providing him or her with the state test, and the child needs to say, "Done, hang on."
That's the difference between opting out and refusing to test. These are like SGOs and SGP's and everything else that we're dealing with. These are the new phrases that we're dealing with at a state level now.
But that's what those procedures, right? That's what those procedures are saying, that you can read, bring a book.
Right.
But I'm saying that I would have a hard time saying to a kid, "You're just going to come here and sit in the library. I think you still have to offer them the test, and if they say, 'I'm not taking the test.'"
You think kids are going to do that, Dave? My son's not going to tell the teacher he's not taking the test. I'll tell you that right now. And I, I can't imagine, I mean, we took it in elementary school, so maybe a high school kid would, I don't think a middle school kid would either, to be honest with you. And, you know, and I'll tell you, today I was told that I needed to write a letter to the principal, and that it was going to get forwarded to you, obviously. But I was also told that, because then, of course, I said, "So what am I supposed to do when I have to go to work, and my son can't go to school?" And I was told, "Oh, I can't imagine they're going to tell us that he can't come to school." So again, and I've spoken to you about this, and you know my reasons for not wanting only just one of my children to take this test, but they still don't, that my whole point is, I'm sort of, my whole point is, and a lot of the parents who won't say anything until three of us sit here or say something, is that nobody really knows. And even if you had a meeting with them, they didn't understand, because.
Yeah, mixed messages.
I was definitely told today, "Of course you could send them to school." So, you know, and not every parent is, is looking to make a scene about their kid not taking the test either. Somebody said, you know, "Some of us have really valid reasons for not wanting our children to take them, like being on a third grade reading level in the fifth grade, and then seeing what else is going on with all this testing."
So my other, my other concern that came up, even at the Middlesex County level, why they drafted a Middlesex County policy, aside from what these local boards have done, a South, which the tenants were saying. There, then that, that incurs another hidden cost. So I have teachers assigned to opter the test, administer the test. And I have the kids who aren't testing are with their regular teacher. So now I have a group of students who aren't taking a test, who's going to supervise those students while those teachers are testing. So then you have to bring in additional people in to do that.
Don't you do that to things all the time? I mean, this, this is supposed to be about the kids, you understand what I'm saying? Like, I, I feel like there are kids, first of all, I don't really know, unless there's crazy parents, what parent would really just say, "You don't take the test," or, you know, go around telling all the kids, "Oh, you're not going to take the test, so tell all your friends not to take the test." I don't see that, maybe I'm naive, maybe I wouldn't do it, so I don't understand. I can't imagine a big number.
If an eighth grader says, "You're not going to take the test," and the principal says, "Well, come with me to the library to read a book," 10 out of the eighth graders in that classroom aren't going to say, "I'm not taking it, I'm not going to sit and take the test."
I'm not talking about the kids, Dave, I'm talking about a letter from a, like, a letter from a parent with a concern. I, I don't know how to address this whole thing either. I'm obviously worried about my son, and I am worried about the other kids too. But I just, in my mind, like, it, I don't know, it makes me crazy. You know, the attendance for me wouldn't be the big thing for my kid. You know, he's in fifth grade, it would be a problem for me. I have to take a month off from work without pay, would I get it? I don't know. But I can't do that. I work here, but I can't do that anyway, you know? And it's, and I can't be the only parent who doesn't want their child, you know?
To add to that, just so that everyone understands, that, not that I'm suggesting that you take the time off for park, but he's not testing for 20 days. The test is open for 20 days, he's not testing for more than five days.
But I was told if they don't, and again, I could be wrong. If, if he doesn't go to school, then he's absent, which means that he's required to take the makeup.
No.
No? Okay, because that's another five, and then it's also, okay.
And, and I think in initial discussions, when, when things were coming up, that, that maybe that was out there. And, you know, as things continue to evolve, more information comes out, and as Dave said, that, you know, I guess it was the county or the state that said, "You have the option."
They said you, said you should provide.
Exactly, so that leaves it open and gives some flexibility.
The, again, the administrative code essentially administers tests as scheduled by the Commission of Education. Say that you shall then give makeups to them. So the conversation was, you administer the test, the kids who are absent from the test, who want to take the test, you can administer makeups to them. If they're saying they're not taking the test, you don't have to.
So on that note, if a parent doesn't want their child to take the test, they keep their child home that day. Now, the child comes back the next day, two days later, whatever it is, is the school going to ask the parent permission to give the child a makeup? Or is the school going to say to the child, "Okay, would you like to take this makeup today?"
That's, that's the part about where people would provide in writing. So they can't say, "Well, I didn't know, I wanted to take testing." So they can't say, well, I didn't know, I wanted to take testing, put in writing. If you're, and it's only an hour test. Given the schedule. They will be given a schedule. So my child comes in after the test, comes in late, goes right to class, and that's it.
Parent letters are going home. I don't remember exactly the date, but within the next couple of weeks, those letters are going home that will have additional information. That was discussed and draft letters were shared with the administrators on Wednesday and the fourth. So, you know, that information is coming too, and those letters will be posted on the website. As I said, the sale was being trained. Unfortunately, we lost another day because of the snow. I think there's a lot of questions still out there. You know, and everybody's trying to get that information out there in a uniform way without the misinformation that's out there and the, the contributions even from other districts and what other spaces are doing, which may or may not be right.
Good question.
Now, these will be the days that my child will be in the fourth grade, these ones are basically, these ones, you know, in the morning, I don't have that level of...
Yeah.
In advance, so they'll know.
Yes, and that was one of the things that came up in discussion, that, you know, should this schedule be done building, building-based or district-based? And we said, you really have to have, you know, all third graders tested within the same week. And then all fourth, just like we use, we did with the New Jersey AS so that we can send it out, and parents know, this is when my child is going to be testing based on the grade of third.
So are the parents going to be told to, in that letter that you're sending home, that if they wanted to opt out or refuse, they have to send a letter in? Because parents... I don't think that would be in that letter, but there are going to be parents that are going to be kind of trying to avoid sending in something and just kind of keep their kid home and then send them in later on in the afternoon. So would that kid be tested? Because some parents may not know to send in a note. And if, if, if you have less than the 95%, like you, right? Is that where you need 95%? If you have less than 95%, and maybe, I don't know, you're 3% short because so many kids were absent because they didn't send in a letter, are you going to test those kids when they come back so you can get up to your 95%?
I won't know, I won't know. 95% is totally after the 20 days are closed anyway, so...
Okay. Well, for the third grade, you wouldn't measure third grade at that point? Or is it 95% as...
It's 95% overall.
For the whole?
Is it 95% of the students who show as opposed to 95% of all registered in the district?
I think it's 95.
You're barely at 95% on our average over, over a normal day. I mean, so that's, would seem to be a real...
No, it's 95% of eligible students to take the test.
I understand that typically on any given day, does an absentee rate around about 4% or 5%?
Usually have very good, we usually have very good attendance.
So what I'm saying, you're getting a pretty significant college for normal absence.
Well, interestingly, when we give the, the New Jersey AS too many, we had a much higher attendance and, you know, fewer makeups at that time than we did from the beginning of March. Right, there were a lot of kids that would be out of here in March as it was too bad.
Okay, any other discussion?
Actually, I have one more question. I'm sorry. It's still not clear for me. So if I send my daughter in, is she going to sit and stare? Is she going to have to have a book with her? Like, I just kind of not really sure what our official unofficial policy is.
The policy is that they must administer the test.
I understand.
If the student is done taking the test, they may be...
Okay, so if she comes in and I write a letter, which I'm not planning to do, I'm just using myself as an example, always Sandra as an example, what will she be allowed to do?
See, it's, it becomes much easier if the parents write the letter, but I can't implore parents to write letters to violate the law.
I understand.